It looks good to me, Lisa. You're kind of amazing.
Certainly don't feel that way now. Okay, but we are good to go. I will be back on my own computer here in just a moment. Oh, I'm not even joined. What if I join, will you make me?
Is Mike going to rejoin?
I think everybody's working on it now.
Okay. Is Lonnie Croft not going to be here?
We're trying to get everybody reconnected.
Okay, thank you. Where's that going? Hey.
Are you ready to be a host, Lisa?
I am.
Do you want to be a host or a co-host?
Um, now I think co-host will be fine. Okay, let me try and get my share going again. I apologize to everybody for never plan on YouTube themselves having an issue.
Be out of your control.
I guess we only can control what we can control, huh? Lesson I learned way too many times, I'd rather not.
Five o'clock's a way better start.
As long as, yeah, we may be pushing, we may be pushing planning commission to starting late today now, too.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Liv, right?
Do we have everybody back?
We're still waiting on Lonnie. I'm gonna go ahead and meet myself and see if I can figure out what the problem is.
Actually, Lonnie wasn't logged in the first time either.
He wasn't, but he called me to let us know that he was having a problem with the link, so.
I got you, okay.
Working on it.
Okay, so let's see. I'm going to update the information on the YouTube for the people who are, or I mean, on the board docs for the people who were watching as attendees. They need a new link. Might help if I'm in edit mode. Whoops, should change that, too. Okay. I've put out the new links on social media. And I believe now we have everybody here. So can we pretend that we are just starting?
Are we ready to go? All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience and thank you all for being here. I now call to order the special meeting of the City of College Place City Council. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Yes, I will. Mayor Hernandez obviously is here. Councilmember Bobbitt.
Present.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nyhagen.
Present.
Councilmember Selby.
Present.
Councilmember Sherman.
Present.
We also have, is city attorney with us? She is.
Yes.
Sorry, I can't see you. And city administrator Rosatello, oh, there she is. Finance director Brian Carlton. Engineer technician Spencer Meyerly. HR manager Sean Doring. Deputy city clerk Shelley Williams and city clerk Lisa Nysol. We do have a quorum. We are ready to go. We are also joined by our applicants for this position today. Paul Jessup, Monica Boyle, Lonnie Croft, James Foster, and Nadine Steckline.
Great, thank you. Welcome, everyone. I just want to remind everyone to, if you're not speaking, to please be sure to put yourself on mute until you are. Council position number seven vacancy was created by the resignation of councilmember Byron Trope. There were five applicants for the open positions, all of which met the requirements to apply for the position. We estimate that each interview is going to take up to or last up to 20 minutes. The interviews are open to the public. However, questions will be posted only by current council members and the mayor. Questions which may not be asked include age, sexual preference, race, marital or family status, or religious affiliation. Councilmembers, if you ask any question other than what's on the list, you should be sure to ask the same question of all the remaining candidates. After the interviews, council has scheduled a possible executive session to review the qualifications of the candidates for appointment to the elected office pursuant RCW 42.30.110. The council may then take action in open session on the appointment to fill the vacancy. If the action to appoint a candidate to fill the vacancy is taken, the swearing in for the appointee will be done at that time or at the beginning of the May 25th city council meeting to avoid having all the candidates wait during the entire process unless they so desire. The clerk will now do a random draw to determine the order of the interviews. All right. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and do all of them at once, so we can just get this thing out of the way. No, we already did Croft. Oh, I don't have as quality of a tool that I had last time.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so we're gonna eliminate the ones who have been selected.
It was so spiffy the last time.
I know, but it took up my whole screen, so I thought I'd Okay. Yay.
All right.
The order has been determined.
Okay, it is now time for the candidate interviews. Each person will have approximately two minutes to answer each question. And they'll be given three minutes at the end to add anything they think the panel should know, so use your words wisely. All right, and so I'm going to ask each of the candidates a question, and please reply yes or no. We'll start with Mr. Jessup. Candidate Jessup, are you available for the regularly scheduled city council meetings, which are held on the second and third Tuesday at 7:00 PM and the first Tuesday at 5:30 PM of each month, keeping in mind these meetings can last up for two, three hours?
Yes.
Thank you. Candidate Boyle, are you available for the regularly scheduled city council meetings on the second and third Tuesday at 7:00 PM and the first Tuesday at 5:30 PM each month with the meetings able to last up to three hours?
Yes.
Thank you. Candidate Cross, are you available for the regularly scheduled city council meetings held on the second and third Tuesdays at 7:00 PM and the first Tuesday at 5:30 PM of each month, knowing that the meetings can last up to three hours?
Croft, yes.
Thank you. Candidate Foster, are you available for the regularly scheduled city council meetings held on the second and third Tuesday at 7:00 PM and the first Tuesday at 5:30 PM each month, knowing that the meetings can last up to three hours?
Yes.
Okay, and candidate Steckline, are you available for the regularly scheduled city council meetings held on the second and third Tuesdays at 7:00 PM and the first Tuesday at 5:30 PM of each month, knowing that the meetings can last up to three hours?
Yes.
Great, thank you all. You are all welcome to remain in the meeting after the completion of your interview. You don't have to, but you're welcome to. And it will now, I'll hand over the floor to councilmember Bobbitt to begin the questions.
So are we all set?
Yes, sir, you can, you can start asking the question one.
And I'm asking this to candidate Croft.
Oh, that's right, Lisa, who was first, candidate Croft?
Yes.
Yes, Croft is first.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Croft is up.
Thank you.
Okay, so Lonnie Croft, my question for you is what do you see as the most important duty or responsibility of a city council member?
Due diligence for the city of College Place residents. Financially being responsible for the funds that they're responsible for spending. Being wise with their decisions. With what to do with those funds. Collectively making decisions for the best the betterment of the city and for the citizens of College Place. Doing what they do and have been doing for decades is, their job is to look at the city, what's best for our citizens. And, and has, have, as they have been doing for, for those years, you know, continuing to put the city first. And that's why there's a, a large group of you, and everybody has different opinions and ideas. And so that's why there's the large group. Everybody has a different idea, but collectively, you always come together and make the best decision for the city. And that's what's the nice thing about having a group of people is sharing of ideas. And then collectively coming to an agreement on what is the best decision for this, this issue or this problem, or how do we go about doing things? And but, you know, spending funds, tax dollars, and things like that, that's usually one of the big issues for people that live in the city, as I, living in the city, what happens with my funds?
Thank you.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you. Tell me about a time when you faced conflicting priorities. How did you determine top priority? And we may wish to reset that counter.
Conflicting priorities. Who doesn't deal with that every day, it seems like. Well, currently, in my, my current position is the maintenance coordinator for a Milk Creek project. You deal with that every day, and what we call putting out fires, you deal with fires every day, and you look at the, the bigger picture, which one is more important? Look at the big picture again. Which one should we do? Which one's better for the project? Which one must be done right now? Which one is going to affect us the most right now? Which one is going to be a emergency if we don't handle it right now, things like that? Maybe taking your kids to something. My son has this program, my daughter has this program. We've dealt that with that at our home. One kid has a program at one school, another kid has a program at another school. Well, a lot of times, the parents, we decide to split up. This Thanksgiving program, dad goes with the son. Christmas program, dad goes with the daughter. You just, you just make decisions to the best of your ability to do the right thing at that time. Usually with all the information that you have, you make the best decision you can.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. And Mr. Croft. Do you approach resolving personal conflict such as a difference of opinion in a team environment?
Our team environment is, again, what I work in every day. There's a group of us at my current project. And we collectively sit down every morning and have a safety brief. What are our projects for the day? What are our work orders for the day? And we go over those, and we clarify what needs to be done, what's the most important thing. Sometimes we discuss, somebody wants to do one thing over another. We set the priorities for the day, and sometimes one of the guys will say, I just really want to do this today. And we discuss those options, and sometimes the higher graded employee will make the final determination, and not everybody likes those determinations. But it depends on the rest of the project and the rest of the week's projects. You know, not just that day, but what's the bigger picture again? And we usually have to sit down and talk about it, but we sit down and we discuss the issues. And we collectively come to an agreement. There's never any yelling or screaming or anything like that, but we sit down as men, talk about the problem. We try to find a happy median usually. And voice our opinions, voice our concerns. A lot of times, we, we don't usually have an issue. We'll just change the direction of the day, we change the order of the program. Instead of doing it this day, we'll do it later that day or tomorrow or the next day, whatever it might be. That's, that's why we have such a great team where I'm at. Everybody wants to work together, especially with a lot of military people. There's a lot of type A personalities, and a lot of type A personalities don't always agree to do things the same way. So you usually have to be able to converse about your differences of opinions.
Thank you.
All right, my turn. Tell us how involved you believe that city council member should be in the day-to-day operations of each city department.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Tell us how involved you believe city council members should be in the day-to-day operations of each city department.
I don't believe they should probably be too involved in the day-to-day operations. Their positions are not full-time. I understand correctly that they've never been full-time. They're, they meet twice a month to discuss the business that they're given that come up during the week and things, and to make the decisions that are put before them for the direction and foregoing of the, the city. Unless they're asked by yourself or directed by the city administrator for some type of purpose to be a part of something on the day-to-day basis, I don't believe they're, they're a part of that at all. If I'm wrong, I, I have no, I don't believe that they are a part of the day-to-day. I don't think they should be unless directed or asked by upper administration.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Nyhagen.
Hurrah.
What do you see as the top issues facing the city, and how would you approach a solution for those issues?
First of all, Semper Fi, Marge.
Thank you, Semper Fi, thank you.
A couple of the items I remember reporting about there on that questionnaire was transportation issues. The amount of people that are driving down College Avenue anymore are incredible. From when I was a kid growing up, it's the amount of traffic, traffic control is a big one. And how that is going to be controlled in the future, I think it's only going to get worse. That would be for the city streets and folks in planning to probably deal with how to deal with the amount of traffic that's going to happen. Then the other one would be infrastructure. With the amount of people moving into the area, and I understand there's going to be a new school built on South College. Is the infrastructure beefy enough to handle another school? Budgeting that with the, the city tax dollars and probably state grants would be a part of that and things like that. But is our infrastructure strong enough to deal with that? I certainly hope so, and if not, hopefully we can afford to beef that up because our community is only getting bigger. It's expanding just really fast these days. And what used to be onion fields and wheat fields and strawberry fields are nothing but communities and houses nowadays. And it's amazing what has happened over the last 45, 50 years. But those are some of the big ones, infrastructure, continuing to build on that, making sure our, our infrastructure can be handled and can grow with our city and be paid for. Transportation continuing to grow. Make sure we can handle that, and I think parking has changed a lot, too, in downtown. There's less of it on College Avenue, and is that gonna be, is that gonna be an issue in the future?
All right, we'll move on to councilmember Selby, and then councilmember Sherman, feel free to go on after Ms. Selby's done.
This is councilmember Selby, and can you give me an example of what you've done to earn somebody's trust?
Do what I say I'm gonna do. Carry out a a mission, complete a mission, complete a task. If I say I'm gonna do something, I absolutely do it 110%. A small case in point, a friend of mine, she has a 12-year-old boy who has, is nothing but Army this and Army that, and his dad isn't around. And she works local, single mom kind of thing, and I said I she said his birthday was coming up, and she said he would love to do something. All he does is wear fatigues. You know, he's, you know, sixth grader, seventh grader. And I says, how would he'd like to take a tour of the National Guard Armory and climb around in one of the Army vehicles? And she said he would die and go to heaven if that happened, and so I called up one of the recruiters down here at the Guard Armory and and made an appointment, and we went down there and he got to crawl around, and they even let him start up one of them, and anyway, we had a great day, but just said I would see about making that happen, and I made it happen. But I had some great guys down there at the Armory who, we got to talk in military stuff. I was in the Marine Corps myself. And so you get to talk and shop with guys, and they want to help you out, especially when there's kids involved, single moms, and his dad was in the Army as well, so they just helped out an Army kid, you know, and they looked at it that way, so they told them to come down anytime, and of course, they said, when you turn 18 or 17, come back and see us, and we'll sign you up. You can do this for a living, so they had their reasons for bringing it on, too, so. But carrying, just doing what I say I'm gonna do. Don't let people down. Don't say you're gonna do something and not do it.
Thank you.
All right, I have the last question. Can you please give me an example of a time when you spent a significant amount of your own time and effort helping a team or group complete a task?
Well, I do a volunteer thing at my church, actually, and it's something I did for years before it actually became an official an official duty, per se, as a volunteer official duty. For years and years before we started having, it seemed like all these reported, all these shootings in churches and schools and things. I used to kind of volunteer with the head pastor's blessing, so to speak. I would kind of do kind of a quasi-security deal with this offering. You know, they'd bring the offering played out, they'd put them into a big bucket. And for weeks and years and months and years, it went on that, I just kind of followed the offering bucket every week, make sure it got to the counting room, and then it got put into the safe, and I'd often help with that. And there was a team of the deacons that did this every week. I was just kind of the outsider that kind of helped out with that, but after a while, they decided with some insistence, after a retired captain from San Bernardino County came up here, moved up here and started coming to church with some of his insistence, they decided to put together a an emergency contact team, you know, like, what if we have an emergency? What are we gonna do? So the church started getting more proactive. And they decided to put together a group of deacons and some emergency evacuation plans and responding plans, things like that. And so it became kind of an official deal, but you had to be vetted by the church and go through a background check at that point. For years, I just kind of did it out of my own. And nobody knew about it except the senior pastor, and I don't know, it was just, once it became kind of out there that this is what was happening, it wasn't it wasn't quite so much fun, but, anyway, it's kind of my thing. But the team came together, then they gave you this book, the police department came down, they did some training, active shooter training with us. And that was nice, because I
Time is up, sorry.
Oh, is that what that noise was? Oh, I wasn't sure what that noise was. All right, thanks, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Okay, so the next one up is, is Lisa, who is it, Mr. Jessup?
You said, don't we, isn't there a three-minute?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Croft, I'm sorry. Is there anything else you think the council should know about you?
Oh, yeah, I do. I'm, I was born and raised here. My parents met when they went to the, what was then Walwalah College back in the early 60s. So I, I used to run from some of the police officers back in the day, and then I So I, I used to run from some of the police officers back in the day. And then I was a police officer here for about eight years, just short of that. So I know the community. I know the citizens here. Ton of people. And you know, I used to work at the penitentiary, I served in the Marine Corps. I now serve as a civilian at the Army Corps of Engineers out at Mill Creek and Bennyton Lake. And this is an opportunity for me to again, serve as a civilian, you know, not in uniform, but again, to serve my community of college place, you know? And you know, I think it's a great honor, it's a great opportunity for me. And you know, Marge told me years ago, she says, if you ever get a chance, try for the council. And everything seemed to kind of work out. I had small children many years ago and they're kind of grown, one's out of the house right now. One's gonna be a senior. They don't want so much to do with dad in the evenings, seems like. And so this is a great opportunity for me to give back for a little while. And it may turn into years, I don't know. With your blessing, I hope it does. And then with the community's blessing, hope it turns into something for a while. But I was born to serve, I love to serve, I love to help, I love to be on a team. And teamwork is kind of my thing. And especially with the group of like-minded people that want the same thing for their community, because I take this community very personal. So that's what I have to say and I wish you the best as you make your tough decision.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna sign off then.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, be nice too. Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Lonnie.
So correct me, it was Mr. Jessup next?
No, Nadine Steckline is next.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, Ms. Steckline, you're up. And Councilmember Bobbitt will begin the questions again.
Okay, Nadine, what do you see as the most important duty or responsibility of a city council member?
I believe the most important duty of a city council member is to listen to the community and to provide services.
Add connection.
I'm sorry, the audio is not coming through very well.
Is the internet unstable? I'm gonna turn off my camera, is that better?
It's still breaking up quite a bit.
Are you able to hear me?
Try that again. Nadine?
Are you able to hear now?
No, you're going in.
I tried joining on my phone, does that work better?
Oh, yes. Much better.
Um, I can't see the timer, but I'll listen for it. So I'll, I'll start with the most important duty of a city council member is to listen to community members and to provide accessible services. Working with the city administration to make sure that the services that are provided to the community serve all those who are in need of, of being serviced. And I believe just kind of taking their lived experiences as a city council member, living in, in City of College Place to make the city a better place at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Okay, and council members, feel free to go on after one finishes and you can go next. So we're gonna just go on to Councilmember Cleveland and then Peterson.
All right, welcome, Nadine.
Thank you.
Tell us about a time when you were facing conflicting priorities. How did you determine the top priority?
I can see the timer now, so could we reset it or? Okay. Perfect. So when facing conflicting priorities, working in higher education, that happens often. I have students who want me to fund an event and I have other folks reaching out about, you know, strategic planning and budget. And the way I determine which is most important is usually by talking to my supervisor or to other folks who have been in that role before, to getting their expertise. And, and seeing what, what you think would be, you know, the most important thing to work on. And then utilizing the information I get from multiple folks to make that determination. So is the budget deadline coming soon? Then that should be the priority. Basing it on deadlines is another way to make sure that the priority that is first is, is the one that is next on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nadine. How, how do you approach resolving personal conflict such as difference of opinion in a team environment?
In a team environment, I first like to listen to the other person's opinion, even if it differs from mine. Try to understand where they're coming from. And then I try to put myself in their shoes and see how I would feel if I were in their shoes. I think it's important that both sides listen to each other, even if they're not in agreement in a cordial way. And that they try and come to a win-win solution when that's possible. I believe that when both parties have empathy and understanding as to each other's opinion or side, that they are able to be able to work together successfully as a team. Thank you.
All right. How involved do you believe city council members should be in the day to day operations of each of the city departments?
So I believe that they should not be involved day to day operations. We, we, City of College Place has amazing administration, like Mr. Rizetalo and Lisa. And so those folks should be let to do what they do best. And, and they should just, city council should just be consulted on certain matters. Or serving on a board or a commission, if that's appropriate and when that's appropriate. So I believe that city council should be involved in things like the strategic planning initiatives and larger discussions and not in the day to day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nyhagen?
Yes. What do you see as the top issues facing our city and how would you approach those solutions for those issues?
Um, I see the biggest issue in our city is I'm not having a downtown area. So when I first moved here and I wanted to grab a bite to eat in the afternoon, you know, with a friend, I, I would have to go to Walla Walla if I wanted to do so. And so I would love to be able to walk somewhere where I could gather with community members. I think that I would fix that by trying to encourage small businesses to and having the zoning around having small businesses and pop-ups right there on College Avenue so that folks can have, you know, a smoothie trailer where folks are able to, and some picnic tables and encourage people to come on, on a weekend or an evening to kind of gather that information. And then I think that the other one is the lack of high school programs or after-school programs. I'm really happy to hear about the, the Campfire and United Way providing services to our students this summer. But I think there is a lack of resources for our teens and after-school to get involved after the bell rings. And the third would be the lack of sidewalks. I think it's a safety issue for folks who may be disabled or who may not be able to be in the street with their bike. I, I see the sidewalks as being another of those factors. So I would work with to incorporate the grants and reach out to, to get some funding to support that and working with the Blue, Blue Zones initiatives to make our city more walkable in terms of the sidewalk.
This is Councilmember Selby. Can you give me an example of what you've done to earn someone's trust?
Um, so first, coming a thousand miles away from family and friends, I had to earn a lot of folks' trust. And I did that by being present and going above and beyond. So if there was a committee at Walla Walla Community College that needed somebody, I would sign up and I would be there. And I would go above and beyond to do what they asked. And I feel that I have earned a couple of folks' trust in that the president, the former president of the college actually reached out to me and said, I noticed you're doing all these things. I would like to promote you. And so they promoted me to my dream job that I have now, which is the Director of Student Life at Walla Walla Community College. But building trust was the first step in being able to move up in my, at the college and not being from here, being able to listen, being able to, to not make judgment and to take in the considerations of others is a way for me, is a way I figured out to, to make others trust me.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Councilmember Sherman. I have the last question. Can you give me an example of a time when you spent a significant amount of your own time and effort helping a team or group complete a task?
Sure. So I love to volunteer. One of the things that I did is I volunteered to purchase books for students of color in our community. Who, during Black History Month, I wanted them, students who identified as black and BI, what's known as BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color, to receive books and promote literature of characters that look just like them, because I think, I think representation is important. So I work in College Place library, public library. We got some books donated. I worked with the Lions of College Place. We were able to store the books there. I was able to collect, help collect donations. And then we were able to deliver those books to students in need in our area as well as have them come by and pick up their books. So that is kind of, that is one of the service projects that I'm really proud of and, and that served our students in the College Place and Walla Walla School Districts. Just working with the various partners, including the school district, to, to get these students books that they would want to read and books that they would open and see someone that looked like them. And it did take a significant amount of time and energy, but it was a, a really great payout at the end.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Nadine, do you have anything you think the panel should know?
I do. Okay, so I'm a first generation, college-educated Latina resident of College Place. And my husband and I decided to purchase our first home here in College Place. And actually, today is our two-year anniversary. We've been married for two years. He is a basketball coach at College Place High School. So he's in Wapato. He wanted me to make sure to say that. That's why he's not here supporting me today. And I just want to say that my, my little family, me, my husband and my dog, Lou, we love living in this community and we really want to give back. When I am passionate about something, I do everything in my power to educate myself and to work on a solution. I'm very solution-based thinker. And serving on the Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Board and other boards and volunteering for the city has taught me that I want to spend my time and my energy in, in city council. So in closing, I would be a great asset to the city council as I will bring diverse perspective, my experiences, my passion to make College Place a city where everyone feels welcome to be themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, again, remember you can, you can choose to remain or if you need to log off, you may as well. Okay. Who is next? I don't want to take a guess anymore because I've been wrong both times.
You'd be right this time. Mr. Jessup.
All right. Well, that was my guess. So Heather's right. Okay. All right, Mr. Jessup, you, your first question's gonna come from Councilmember Bobbitt.
Craig, good evening.
Good evening, Paul. What do you see as the most important duty or responsibility of a city council member?
It's a great question. Thank you so much. As a high school American government teacher, it seems to me that the city council is kind of the more local legislative body that is meant to seek perspective and understanding and to listen and be in a position of which to make decisions on behalf of the perspectives, not only for limited few or not only for those that they know or around them. But be the one who understands not only the perspective now, but also innovative for the future. So it seems to me that the city council position is one to listen and fully understand and to make decisions based upon the now and the later. And it seems to me that's a, is a civil engagement opportunity in which someone who's vested in the community can also get others to be vested in the community and look and make the sometimes challenging decisions. But also do so in a way that reflects the community of now, but also the community of tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's me. Tell us about the time, conflicting priorities. How did you determine the top priority?
Well, it's a great question. I'm certainly currently as well. So I kudos to Mrs. Steckline, my assistant coach is currently coaching in a game. And I am sitting in the cafeteria, Wapato, currently with my varsity basketball team getting ready to play. And so here I am in this meeting. And so I found this to be a priority. How it is that I felt that this was a priority, how I determined that priority is a couple of things when I try to determine priorities. First, I hope that I had taken the time and effort prior to the background so that I'm not trying to put out fires, if you will, or try to make decisions on the spot, but rather have trusted that I already understand and know and have thought through and spoken with my trustees of what our goals and objectives and our long-term objectives are. And then also that I have done my due diligence to communicate and to essentially communicate with whom I need to communicate with and trust that they're gonna do their job. And so when it comes to priorities such as deceiving, I understand that this is more of a big picture, long-term goal, more so than to be at my assistant coach's basketball games. I felt that this was a more, of a greater priority that does, yet still doesn't keep me from my responsibilities. I can entrust in those who I, I've hired and understand that that is a short-term goal at the moment. But I've already determined my long-term goal, which is, allows me to be here communicating with you now.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Jessup, Councilmember Peterson. How do you approach resolving personal conflict such as the difference of opinion in a team? How do you approach resolving personal conflict such as a difference of opinion in a team environment?
That's a great question. As a high school teacher, I've been on the principal advisory team, which is essentially a liaison between administration and the perspective of teachers. I've been a, I'm currently a lead negotiator for our coaches' union in which we're negotiating, creating a new contract for coaches within the community. I'm also in a teacher, which is a collection of individuals, and I'm not sure how where we are at this, but I, teachers are all very individualized and very opinionated, but really, at the end of the day, in all of those different roles, as a teacher or coach, advisor committees and so on and so forth, the way in which I have found to kind of go through is not to see it as a conflict, but as an opportunity to understand perspective. And so the way in which I've gone through that is to seek to understand, to listen and understand first, and to see in which what everyone's common grounds is and to look through and to understand various perspectives and common grounds. And if you forgive the phrase, if you don't mind the phrase, oftentimes in these council meetings, I'm referred to as the devil's advocate, because I typically am one who tries to see various points of view and try to approach it, any kind of challenges or even personal conflicts and that such thing from various perspectives. And so that's really kind of the general approach, the same as my themes in my classroom, which is perspective and professionalism and persuasion. And I think it starts with perspective and then approaching that perspective in a professional manner. I think at the end of the day, it finds common ground, and from that common ground, then we can converse on how to get there.
Thanks so much.
Right, Mr. Jessup, how do you, how involved do you believe city council members should be in the day-to-day operations of the city departments?
Thank you for the question. It's as involved, I think, it's kind of a need-to-know basis, if I may. If I understand correctly, which is one of those things in which I would seek to understand that as well. How involved would you want each of these departments for a city council to be in? It's involved could mean various things. Involved could be looking for general advice. It could be a need-to-know basis, being informed, city councilor. But I don't, I believe, if I understand correctly, as I said before, the city council, it's, they're made to seek understanding and seek kind of perspective and make decisions based upon those various decisions and allow the professionals to do what professionals do. And again, if I remember correctly, my job is not to push forth any of my personal agendas or my opinions or perspectives, but rather to understand and make decisions based upon those professionals and to ask questions and so on and so forth. So in terms of involvement, I think involvement is to the extent in which they want us to be involved or informed, so as to allow us to be able to do our positions to the full extent that we're asked to do as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nyhagen. What do you see as the top issues of the city and how would you approach a solution to those issues?
Well, thank you for the question. Not to, certainly not to. I'll get to the answer to the question. I think that would be one of those things in which I would ask those professionals I spoke of earlier. Where is it that they see are the greatest issues and the greatest challenges or hurdles, if you will? I think areas of growth. So I would seek to see and to understand what we believe is the greatest issues and then kind of tackle them from there. With that being said, it seems to me that one of the largest issues is to make sure that we have a vested community, a community that's vested in this community in which they live. And how I see that is to have a community who is educated and trained, and then more importantly, educated and trained for jobs. It seems to me that one of the greatest challenges is to have job opportunities for those high school students in which I teach and connect to the community as a Community Connections Coordinator and those students coming from Wawa and those students coming from Wala Walla University to have an opportunity for them to live, grow, and prosper within the communities in which they're educated. So it seems to me that having jobs available and will also trickle down and help provide opportunity for other areas of growth, such as any of our creating a stronger tax base, if you will. So having the jobs available and having an educated and trained populace to be able to fill those jobs seems to me that that would be a priority that would help filter down to any other agendas or challenges with growth or challenges with anything within the infrastructure, so on and so forth, that would give us a tax base, a revenue, but also a community wanting to live and stay here and give them an opportunity to do so.
Thank you. So, Mr. Jessup, this is Councilmember Selby. Can you give me an example of what you have done to earn someone's trust?
It's a great question. Thank you for the question. So I've been very privileged, I think, to have opportunities to be able to do that. I see myself as a public figure, as a coach. I see myself as a public figure, as a teacher. I also have been privileged enough, my wife and I have been missionaries in Brazil as well, going to different cultures, and each of those opportunities are opportunities in which we have had the honor of building up trust with others, because in relationship, especially with teenagers, if you will, and other adults such as our, my peers and that kind of stuff, I have found that a tactful honesty or a tactful sincerity with people kind of shows that you don't have a faith, you don't have a two side of things, that you're you're real, you're honest, and you're open. And I believe that kind of opens up doors in which one can then communicate when they're on the same page. And so as a teacher, each year I have to spend looking at teenagers who typically have a somewhat of a negative disposition towards authority, if you will. That's what, that's ways in which I try to earn trust, even with them and parents as well. And that's open and sincere communication and honesty with them. They know when is that they're doing well, and we know what it is when, what we need to do and what we need not to do, and open and taking initiative with communication, I think, is a huge way in which I've earned trust with others as well, is taking initiative with communications, whether that be in a position as a teacher or as a coach or as a a new, a union negotiator or principal advisory team. I I think as a coach as well, oftentimes you have parents who entrusted you and you have collegiate coaches who entrusted you with their quote-unquote their babies. And so they need to be know that you're open and honest with them, that you're trying to do what is best for them. And I think that's a ways in which I've continued to try to earn trust with others and I believe have done so.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Jessup, this is Councilmember Sherman. I have the last question. Can you give me an example of a time when you spent a significant amount of your own time and effort helping a team or a group complete a task?
Sure, that's a great question. It's funny to answer such questions because I don't want to be, I don't want to come across or pat my own back or shoulders in this sense, so forgive me if it comes across that way, but I I think that's kind of the general environment in which I find myself in in general. So the reason which my wife and I actually were missionaries in Brazil is because a good friend of mine wanted to start what he called Glory Sports. And so he wanted to use it as an outreach for the local teenagers who are struggling. Well, he literally asked us to pack up and when we first got married and fly down to Brazil and be missionaries in Brazil. And so it was a great experience, and I think we have set the foundation, but we put on hold what it is that our plans were what my wife and I's plans were, what we thought our first year of marriage was going to be, which ended up turning out to be awesome, but we've spent that entire time trying to help my friend build up that community connection and try to build up that mission field for him and try to help those local teenagers, which is still going today, I'm very proud to say, because of him and the work of others. So we spent a lot of time and effort to do so, which we truly enjoyed. I think we've also, I've done that quite a bit as we work on the union or I've, a lot of times as a Studio 57, which is a senior essentially project course at College Place High School. I'm also the Community Connections Coordinator, and oftentimes I'm very privileged to be able to connect students who are working on particular problems or issues or solutions and connect them with community members outside of school hours, which allows them to be able to work with professionals such as the Port Authority or business owners or so on and so forth. And so I spend very lucky to be able to have that position to spend outside of school hours and and drive them to get them interviews or to get them connected with community members. And so I spend a lot of time to do that because I truly, I truly believe in that connection for those teenagers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you think anything, is there anything else I think the panel should know?
Oh, thank you for allowing the opportunity. Again, I'm Mrs. Steckline. Her her husband is currently my JV coach, currently in the other room coaching, so I feel bad. But I do want to, I do think it's invaluable to know that as a former business owner, I owned a small business when I lived in Indiana as well. And so I think it's important to know that I do truly believe in the various perspectives and growing up in various states and having a, being an educator, but also a former business owner. I think I'm very lucky to be able to come with different perspectives. I think I also am a homeowner here in College Place on College Avenue, which I think allows me to have that vested interest. I currently have, my wife is trained as a PT, but she's, we're lucky to have her as a stay-at-home mother for our four small children. And so I think it's important to know, and one of the reasons which I've wanted to apply is because I believe I have a true vested interest, my wife and my family, because I believe in a small town like College Place, but also, you know, selfishly speaking, when my children grow up, I want my children to have an opportunity in this community to live and strive, but also I want them to have opportunities to which to stay. I know there's a, what the quote-unquote "brain drain" in the valley, and a lot of times, unfortunately, people have to move because they don't have anywhere else to go and they can't stay in the valley for, unless they have very specific jobs, specific job openings. And so I believe it's important to know that I have a true vested interest, not only as a homeowner and but also as a man with four children, that I hope that one day have a community in which they are able to come back and be trained and educated and live and strive and work as well. And so I think that's important to know. I think it's a very, I think, as I know, you know, Byantrop was also a teacher at College Place High School, and I think it's important to continue that connection right with a huge, really entity within our community, which is College Place High School. And I think as a American government teacher as well, I think it's important that I applied because I wanted to give it a chance to be able to make that civil engagement connection between our high schoolers and our community members and show them those connections as a Community Connections Coordinator. I think it's also my job and responsibility to understand the perspective of not only the parents within the community, which is obviously all who have their children at College Place High School, but also the perspective of our future community members, such as our juniors and seniors coming out of College Place High School. I'm very privileged and lucky, and I think those are important factors that I believe got me to want to invest and continue to invest in our community as a city council member.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Again, Mr. Jessup, you are also welcome to stay, or if you want to log off, you have that option.
Thank you kindly.
All right. Lisa, can you tell me who's next? I have a fifty-fifty guess, but.
Ms. Boyle is next.
I would have guessed wrong. Okay, Ms. Boyle. Thank you for being here. You are up, and Mr. Bobbit will start with his first question.
Okay, Monica. What do you see as the most important duty or responsibility of a city council member?
I think as a city council member, I think our most important job is to listen and support those that answer to us and that we are in charge of of keeping track of. So we are like a boss in the middle of a business, and when our staff and when the city staff come to us with concerns and opinions, I think that our job is to listen to what they need, what they see as the concerns, and then make an educated decision as to how to proceed with those issues. I think we have some amazing people in positions across our city, and our job is to trust that they know what they're doing and to be able to find the middle ground between what we're hearing from them and what we're hearing from our residents and being able to support the right decision to make everybody that middle ground and be able to listen to those needs.
Thank you.
Hello, Monica, welcome. Tell me about a time when you faced conflicting priorities. How did you determine the
So I am a full-time development director for our local United Way here in town, and so I work full-time and then some, and I am a wife and mother of four kids that range from four years old up to seventeen. So I have kids at every different stage. And so there is a lot of opportunity for conflicting schedules and priorities, whether it's different kids having different sports schedules and activities, work. For example, this evening, my fourteen-year-old son is actually down at Sager playing baseball, and and he is pitching for the first time. So it was that decision of how do we find those priorities and what fits correctly? And you weigh those decisions based off of the greater good. So I know that we have another opportunity to watch my son this Thursday, and I know that this is my only opportunity to be able to speak with you and share who I am for this position and to be able to explain why I am the right candidate for this spot. I think that anytime we're faced with a conflict in our priorities, you have to weigh the greater good. And sometimes it's not always the easy choice. It's not always the choice that's the fun choice. And as a mom, sometimes we pick the need over the want. And as in my professional life, sometimes those conflicts are, do I go to the fun event planning meeting that I need to be at, or do I finish those development plans and make sure that our business is ready to move forward with our next phase and so that we can reach our goals? So sometimes you have to just weigh the greater good and which of those has the greatest impact on tomorrow.
Thank you.
Hello, Monica, this is Councilmember Peterson. Do you approach resolving personal conflicts such as a difference of opinion in a given environment?
So what a great question. After 2020, when I think all of us have been presented with lots of opportunities for conflict in whether it's personal, professional, team events, what have you. And honestly, I think I can really truthfully say that I approach every conflict situation with an open mind. We all have our opinions, our beliefs, and our stance on a situation based off of our own experiences. And oftentimes, the conflict is just a matter of misunderstanding. And so it's weighing that is it a time that we can agree to disagree? And is this a good time to be able to just say, you know, it's not going to matter if I win this this conflict? And so keeping my mouth shut and just letting the situation be. And if it's something where I feel like it's important that that my opinion in the conflict is resolved without just a mutual step back, I really face those opportunities with the opportunity to learn, to understand where they're coming from and to help educate maybe some things from my side that they're not understanding or seeing, and understanding their experiences that are forming those opinions and hoping that they can kind of listen as well to where my side is coming from and trying to find some middle ground and resolution.
Thank you.
All right, Monica, how involved do you think the city council should be in operations of the city staff or in city departments, excuse me?
When it comes to day-to-day operations of our city departments, I don't think the city council should be involved. I think that we should be available for questions and for listening and to be a sounding board when needed. But as I mentioned before, we have some really capable individuals leading our departments, and they have those positions for a reason. And if we, as a council, don't trust their competency in leading their department, then maybe they're not the right person in that position. But at the same time, when they need that sounding board or when they're asking for suggestions and when they're looking for ideas of and when they're looking for ideas of different stakeholders to bring to a table or how to make a teamwork, I think it's our job to be able to listen and support and be that, that person for them.
Thank you.
Monica, Councilwoman Nyhagen, what do you see as the top issues that face our city? And how would you approach those solutions for those issues?
So I think one of the top issues that we have in the city of College Place is the fact that we are a tiny little town and we are trying to grow. And so finding ways to create opportunities for our young people so that we can retain their residency, right? So as my kids grow up and they go to college, rather than, and this is completely selfish, I realize, rather than them leaving our community and, and traveling and, and starting their lives in another city where there's more opportunity, how do we create opportunities for these students and for our youth to actually build their home here? I am a sixth generation out of the small town that I grew up in. And I would love for my children to have been a seventh generation there, but it was a lack of opportunities. Going back to my hometown and, and making that a place to continue on is, wasn't an option. I think that being able to put roots down in our town and letting our families continue to grow generation over generation and being able to keep them. And in that process, as you add those opportunities and as they have business opportunities and opportunities for our kids and our families and drawing in new residents, what are those new businesses? What are those gaps that we don't currently have that we can use as a draw? So I think creating that is truly our biggest challenge, is being able to build that.
So Ms. Boyle, this is Councilmember Selby. And can you give me an example of what you've done to earn someone's trust?
So as I mentioned, I'm the development director for the United Way here in town. My job is to build those relationships, and that's what trust is. It's building relationships with people in our community and letting them know that I am a trustable person, whether that's with the programs that I'm trying to help support in our communities, whether that's convincing them to trust me with their dollars in order to make those investments in our communities. That's, that's my world from before sunup to sundown every day. A great example of that that I was able to do recently is during COVID time and during the floods that we had last February, we created a disaster fund. And being able to reach out to community members and letting them know that they could trust that their dollars were being invested through me and they would go to that piece that they wanted them to, to meet, that need that needed to be met. We were able to successfully create a million-dollar disaster fund this year, which was astounding for our community. One of the great programs that I've been able to create with the trusting relationships that we've been able to build is our adoptive student program. Being able to go into our local schools and form those relationships with school administrators and letting them know that we're not just creating a, a soft, sensitive piece where they're showing the sensitivities of their students that need help, but that we're not going to, to take that and, and run with it. We're going to take that need and meet that need and that that's safe with us. Those relationships that we build, we all know where somebody's sensitive pieces are. We all know where that, that soft part is. And being able to build that trust that they know we're not going to take advantage of it is, is really important.
Thank you.
Hi, Monica, this is Councilmember Sherman. I have your last question. Can you give me an example of a time when you spent a significant amount of your own time and effort helping a team or group complete a task?
So this question is kind of a hard one for me to answer because my whole adult life has been community engagement activities and event planning and, and bringing people together. And so those team, team exercises and environments and projects are kind of my whole 25-plus years of life. So I love being able to take a team and having a goal, whether that's an event or a fundraiser or whatever that project may be, and making sure that we reach and go beyond our goals. And so I oftentimes, you know, a team is not 25, 25, 25, 25. In 2006, I actually was the chairperson for a local parade, actually back in my hometown. And, you know, it comes to the point where, you know, the parade is in a couple of days and people are busy because that's what happens in our lives. We get busy and we get pulled and we go back to those conflicting priorities. And it's a matter of, this has to happen for our community and for our families and for our kids. And so you put in the extra time and it was long nights and early mornings and making the calls that somebody else didn't have time to make and making sure that everything was going to be ready. In my daily life now, right now, I have three events that we're planning and it's, it's putting in that time to make sure that they're successful because every single project has a goal and it has a purpose. And if I don't put in that time and there's no guarantee that we're going to hit that goal and that purpose is going to be fulfilled and, and it's something that I thrive on. Thank you.
All right, Monica, you have three minutes to share anything that you think the panel should know.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, I am from a small town. I have watched small towns grow. I go back to my hometown and I don't really recognize it. It's not the hometown roots feel that I used to know when I was growing up. And when I look at College Place and when I've made this my home, my family and I have been here for nine years, and it's the only home that my kids are ever going to know. And I can't wait to be able to listen to them talk about their home with pride and be able to come home and still feel like that's home. That's a passion that I have, it's a drive that I have. My professional background, I have worked for state business offices, I have worked for public sector, and I have worked in nonprofit. I have a ton of varied experience and, and viewpoint to offer. I think I have a really, really good balance of being able to take a, a problem and find the correct solution for it. I'm really good at bringing different stakeholders to a table and making sure that people are coming together the way that they should and, and finding that maybe I am not the best expert for this piece. And so who is? And how can we bring that piece to the table? I think that that is the solution to every successful problem. My, my family is here and I want my kids to grow up knowing and believing that they have to be a part of something to find pride in it. And I can't teach them that without being that. And that's a big part of what drives me is, is being able to show them what I want them to be and not just their life, but their community and with the people around them. And this is a way that I feel I can really effectively do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and you're welcome to stay, or if you need to leave for the.
I'm going to catch the last few minutes of baseball, so.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay. Mr. Foster, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Finally, your turn, and we'll start with Mr. Bobbitt asking his first question.
Hey, James, what do you see as the most important duty or responsibility of a city council member?
The city council is the governing body for the, for the municipality. The city council members have the fiduciary responsibility for following the legal requirements, ethical practices, and so on, represent the community to the municipality and carry on the responsibilities that have been assigned to that role. But it's not just choosing things based on popularity. It's a requirement of balancing the competing needs. So listen, try to learn, seek out advice and guidance, and then within the confines of the opportunities presented, make the decisions that need to be made. That would be, that would be the role of a city council member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello and welcome. Thank you for coming. Tell me about a time when you faced conflicting priorities. How did you determine the top priority?
So as others have said, that life, day-to-day, there is always an excess of needs over resources. This is just a characteristic of life. And whether it's time, finances, or others, we need to make decisions about what we're going to do, how we're going to make those choices. The general sort of vague rule or overall rule might be within the realm of acceptable choices, you have the cost-benefit analysis. Try to identify the costs, identify the benefits, and choose the one that has the ratio there. Of course, one, the challenge is in assigning the costs and benefits. Often, the costs will be hidden and capital projects, even if you have funding, will carry with them maintenance. And the benefits, it's always fun to have a ribbon cutting or a picture taken at a new opening. But what is the benefits of just the day-to-day infrastructure of services that the municipality should be providing? And so the focus on the core needs would be, would be an important part of identifying the conflicting priorities and choosing among them.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Foster, this is Councilmember Peterson. How do you approach resolving personal conflicts such as a difference of opinion in a team environment?
When there is people involved, there is conflict. And there's a sense in which it, without some amount of friction, for example, the, the car would not be able to drive. And so unless my ideas can be tested against your criticisms, my ideas won't be as strong as they should be. So there's some value in at least alternate points of view, if one wishes to call it that, rather than conflict. But it can often come out to a similar sort of thing. The way I would want to approach it is first with humility. I have developed opinions, I have ideas, I have studied things, but there's still more that I can learn. And one of the things that interests me about serving in a role like this is the opportunity to learn more things, to listen. I recently heard a podcast discussion about rather than dealing with a straw man, try to deal with a steel man. So see if you can restate the arguments being made with someone with whom you're having a conflict and see if you can restate it stronger, not weaker, to tear it down. Recognize the goal is to have a solution, not just to win. But finally, don't be passive. And particularly if the conflict involves attacking someone, be protective of those who are being attacked and set boundaries for those who are doing the attacking.
Thank you.
All right. How involved do you think city council members should be in the day-to-day operations of the city staff and departments?
I think with the others, I'll certainly say we have professionals, we have delegated to them. The role of the city council is not to execute the day-to-day operation, but to set the policy, set the priorities. But then, yes, to follow up and ensure that there's compliance with that. Make sure that the things that are supposed to be being done are actually being done. But also, the city council members are perhaps the more visible part of the municipal government. And so people will come to a council member and report certain things. And so this would be an appropriate way of being the eyes and ears of the community, coming to someone and, and replying to the members of the community. Yes, I'll take that back and see if we can look into it. And then bring those reports from the field to the people who are responsible for the tasks and saying, here's something that I'd like you to be aware of, someone raised this question. And so, yes, the eyes and ears and reporting back, but respecting the competence of the professionals that have been hired and tasked with the job of the day-to-day operations.
Thank you.
What do you see as the top issues facing our city? And how would you approach a solution for these issues?
Sure. I guess while I may have some ideas, and I'll get into that, I would say again that my first role would be to listen and observe. And while I have ideas, I expect that I would learn many things in this role. But I think the top issue in general would be having the resources needed to carry out the core functions. And one of the bigger challenges that I believe College Place has been struggling with is state mandates on things like wastewater and the treatment process such that these are things that were being mandated to take care of. And so we need to address those things. We need to avoid being spread too thin. So where there's a priority, it needs to be managed and dealt with and addressed in, in a way that makes sure that it is actually taken care of. But I don't have a particular agenda as far as sidewalks or jobs. I would prefer that we provide an environment where people and enterprises can grow organically rather than me deciding what's best for everybody else. So that would be the way I would approach that.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Foster, this is Councilmember Selby. And can you give me an example of something you've done to earn people's trust?
Earning trust, it needs to be done by demonstrating competence, delivering on promises. And in my work in software development, working, managing a team, delivering software to enterprises, coming in to a situation where things are struggling and trying to make the changes that will produce results in the long run, but might not have immediate visibility. On the other hand, after a period of time, one of the more rewarding experiences was going into a hospital where we were installing software, where they were having some problems, and meeting the CEO with whom I had had some previous dealings and visits and his response of, well, with James here, I'm confident that things will go well. So you earn trust by setting expectations and then delivering on those expectations.
Thank you.
Mr. Foster, this is Heather Sherman. I have your final question. Can you give me an example of a time when you spent a significant amount of your own time and effort helping a team or group complete a task? helping a team or group complete a task?
The wonderful thing about teams is with the synergy of different perspective, different skills, different drives, ambitions, you can accomplish things that no individual would be able to do, however talented. And being part of that sort of thing is very, very rewarding, being able to see that. I've, and, and I think any of us are working with teams in a variety of areas. In teaching, I have colleagues that I work with that are also teachers. I also work to make the students into a team where one of the courses that I teach involves doing a group project for a term where we create some software that is used by others. And in doing that, delivering and identifying who needs help, getting them the help they need so that each person is able to contribute. Probably the most immersive experience that I had of helping a team complete a task was being part of a church planting group in the Midwest where a few families went together and spent a number of years, and this was a couple decades ago, and the, the church is still there and thriving. But the continuous deep involvement, working closely together, dealing with the personalities of those who may have conflicting goals and trying to help people focus on what they can contribute and how it will be valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Foster, you have three minutes to share everything, anything you think the panel should know.
Well, it's tempting to share everything, but I'll try not to do too much of that. I attended Walla Walla College here in the seventies, met my wife here. She's a native of the Northwest. These were formative times for me and I was interested in process, municipal and government and, and things. Got to observe Mrs. Cross as the mayor with a kitchen timer and a bell, keeping things moving. Was influenced by Lowsees Langs. I actually worked for Ralph Jones for a while and got to observe him as justice of the peace here. Yeah, I was interested in the city. I rode along with Peter Sherman, a police officer here a few times and have kept in touch with him and followed his career working in mental health at the penitentiary and elsewhere. Our children came here to school. Our son teaches here, children and grandchildren. The ties to the community here are long term and expect to, to be here a long time and want to have this a place where my children and grandchildren will have positive experiences. It's been fun to watch the growth of the city, the progress. Things like Walmart, the College Avenue, re, re, regrading and the, the substantial improvements there. I've worked in law. I got exposed to public policy, worked at the Federal Trade Commission in Washington DC. Have been in private practice advising not for profit organizations, schools, doing tax, business law, corporations, enterprise. I enjoy the study of public policy. I read widely on it. I've served on the diversity council for the university. I'm now on the governance handbook committee. And so this idea of policy, how we structure things to achieve the goals is something that interests me. And I recognize although there are many issues that are big at the national level and I certainly have an interest and opinions on those, that local government is often the most immediate and on people's lives and has the biggest impact. And I would like to spend some time working and serving in this capacity. Thank you for the opportunity to share my interests and for your patience going through this process.
No, thank you for being here and thank you for your application. We appreciate it. All right, so we will now adjourn for a 20 minute executive session as authorized by the, as RCW 42.30.110 to evaluate the qualifications of candidate for appointment to elective office. Final action, appointing a candidate to elect our official, be in a meeting open to the public. We do expect to take action when we reconvene at 6:51.
Okay, so all of you council members should have received another link. This meeting is going to stay open and running on our YouTube channel. But those council members and staff that have that link to join the executive session, please leave this meeting and join that one. I'm going to leave it so I can start it.
All right, we will be extending the executive session for another five minutes. So at this point we will return at 6:58.
Make sure we get everybody back here.
Where's our video? Where am I?
Sean, will you make Norma and I co-hosts please?
Can you press your little camera button, Marge? It's next to the mute.
Oh, I think they left to try and join again.
Bless their hearts.
They are still in the executive session, are they? Their camera would...
No, I ended that meeting. They can't be.
Okay.
They can try.
There we go.
There they are. Okay. Reece here. Yeah, there she is. Okay. So we're ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, so I now open the floor for nominations from members of the council. Mr. Bobbitt and then Ms. Nyhagen. It's gonna be afterwards.
I'd like to nominate Paul Jessup. Member.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second for Paul Jessup? Okay, the motion has died. Ms. Nyhagen.
I'd like to nominate Monica Boyle.
Okay, we have a nomination for Monica Boyle. Is there a second?
All second, member Cleveland.
Okay. Let me take a quick look. Is there another nomination? Another motion? Any other motions? All right. No other motions. So we're gonna go through the council members for questions or comments. Mr. Bobbitt? Any questions or comments?
I think all of the candidates that applied would well fill the position.
Mr. Cleveland.
No questions, but I also wanna comment how difficult to set a decision this was based on how qualified and engaged it was. It was very hard to pick.
Mr. Peterson?
No questions or comments.
Ms. Nyhagen.
Was a wonderful meeting. I think we did well.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Selby.
No comments.
And Ms. Sherman?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
So we'll now vote on the motion to appoint Monica Boyle. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is passed.
I just wanna clarify, did everybody vote aye? There were no abstentions?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Then...
One more...
What's that?
One more comment?
Yes, sir.
James, thanks for staying by.
It was a good one.
Thank you. It's fun to observe the process and I think you had some wonderful candidates. You don't know when you apply, who else is going to apply and I think that I'm very pleased with your outcome.
Well, thank you very much for the application. It's very important for us to get as many candidates applying as possible. So thank you for your interest and for your love of this city.
Thank you.
And I will tell my dad hello from you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we'd like to welcome Monica Boyle, who has been appointed to the council position number seven. She is not on, so we will need to give her instructions about filing with the county elections department if she has not already have done so, and instructions for the next meeting. Lisa, will you be able to do that, please?
I will.
Okay.
Lisa, what is the swearing in? That would be...
Both in office. We'll do that on the 25th at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. If there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned at 7:05 PM. All right. If there's no objection, the meeting is adjourned at 7:05 PM.
Have a great evening, everyone.